This conference will now be recorded.
That's for Whitlock? Okay. The hour is live. We don't have BCTV here tonight, so the go-to is going to be our sole video coverage. Welcome Belcher Town to the -- well, that's not the way I usually say it. Good evening, Belcher Town. Welcome to the March 25th, 25th -- if I -- I gotta try to, you know, at least keep it the same way. 2025 meeting of your planning board. We've got a number of items to be reviewed tonight. The first one is the release of the subdivision covenants for street completion for Jason's Way. We had started talk about this two weeks ago, but then we had put it off because it hadn't been listed on the agenda. It's on the agenda tonight, and it's here. I'm ready for review for our signature. We've got street layouts for Willow's Way, Jason's Way, Sycamore Circle, Magnolia Lane, Dogwood Drive, and Hickory Hill. Those are really only two subdivision areas, right? It's Willow, Jason's Way is one subdivision, and then Hickory Hill is one subdivision. And those are all the streets within them. Those went to the select board last Monday, and they passed over -- didn't pass -- they passed them for our recommendation, and then we're going to review them tonight. Recommend them back for the select board to put on the warrant for town meeting here in May. We've got the community facilities update of the master plan that has been to the -- has been to the select board. We've got a right of first refusal for Alexander and Joanna Alvarado on Cold Spring Street. We've got an A&R, which is a minor subdivision review for Cold Spring and Saban Street. Cold Spring is busy tonight for David Frye. Actually, it's not for David Frye. It's just -- I looked at the application. It's just for David and Valthea Frye. David -- Mr. -- oh, that's no. That's my mistake. I've been thinking -- I'm reading LaFleur there. Oh, I thought David LaFleur's name is there, and it's not. No, it's David Frye and Valthea Frye. We've got an A&R, which is a minor subdivision review for North Street for applicant Whitlock. We've got the surveyor here on go-to that's going to help us with this tonight. We've got a discussion for zone change for part of -- that's parcel D of the state school.
Adjacent to parcel D, yeah.
Adjacent to parcel D on the state school off of Route 21 for a potential zoning change that go to town meeting this May. We'd like to discuss, or I'd like to discuss Pepper Ridge. Once again, we've got consent with additions, consent of members, minutes, bills. I see no bills. The town planner report and members' report. Since we do have a guest being the engineer for the A&R for North Street, and we don't have any other timed events, why don't we start with that one? So we can get Mr. Isner on his way. And oh, I know why I was thinking LaFleur, because it says LaFleur on the map. Somebody wrote it on there, and he's not part of that.
Little tricks we like to play.
He's trying to mess with me here. This is what -- This is a busy one. I'm very interested in hearing all about the turtle habitat. Mr. Doug, could you give us a brief overview on this before we ask the engineer to make comments?
Brief overview is, this is the old farm. In recent years, three lots have been cut out of it. One is recently locked and under construction, and this is the rest of it. As you can see, there's a lot of turtle habitat under natural heritage, and there was an extensive review that was done for this, and this would be the remaining three lots that are possible from this. So there's two smaller ones, and rather use the other one.
All right. What we're looking at is two maps, 216 and 205, lots 3801 and 1.02. And then the whole thing's going to be reconfigured into lot 2, 3, 4, and in a state lot?
It's not really technically in a state lot, but yeah.
It's what it says.
Lot 2 here. Will be a new one.
This.
No.
No, just this.
Same last name.
This is lot --
And it's still here.
Oh, yeah.
And then -- We will be new, and then we'll remain -- there's lot 4.
Okay.
We're only creating -- we're going to create three lots out of this.
Yeah.
Not four.
Where's three?
Lot 3.
Oh, three.
Three's on the bottom. It's got 125-foot frontage. It's okay.
No, no, no.
There's an arrow. This is lot 3.
Yes.
Oh, that whole thing.
Lot 3.
Oh.
Mostly ready for spending the rest of the year.
Trace around. This is two.
Okay, here's lot 3.
Okay, so it's...
Here is lot 2.
Including the barn.
Yeah, including the barn, and everything else is lot 2.
Okay, so where it says lot 3 is actually because of the arrows.
That's the arrow.
Yeah.
So there is no remaining land separate from lot 4.
Right. I'm going to cross out where it says -- see where it says state?
Correct.
Lot 4 is not in a state.
Oh, it says it.
Yeah, I think Doug's note it says.
Oh, it says it's in a state.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, okay. You can kick in now. Yes, sir.
The reason that lot 4 is labeled in a state lot is because the frontage off of Route 9 is questionable due to wetlands, so we are accessing off of North Street where we know we don't have any wetland issues, and we do not have 140 feet of frontage there. So that's why we are calling it in a state lot.
And when you say accessing off of north, you mean just below lot 3 or just above lot 2?
Just above lot 2. There's a driveway shown there.
Yeah.
You can see dash lines that show a driveway and go to a so-called turtle impact area. And I apologize for the mess that this plan is, but that's the way National Heritage made us do this.
Okay.
So does this mean the driveway is going through the turtle impact area?
Or to it?
No, it's going -- so I don't know why they call it turtle impact area, but it's open. It's an open space. In that turtle impact area, it says 63,927 square feet. That is what they're allowing us to impact.
Oh. So presumably, a house would go in that area?
That is correct.
Okay, so every place it's checkerboarded is not to be...
Off limits.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So that's the true turtle from area?
Yeah.
It's everything that's checkered?
The part that's blank is the part where turtles will be impacted.
Wow. From a definition of a state lot standpoint, the legal requirement is that there be a 50-foot halfway through there. And looking at the detail that you've called out, it's 40 feet. However, at the very bottom, below lot 3, there is...
125 feet.
There's 125 feet of access. You may not use it. It may not be where your driveway is going to be placed, but that, to me, is the frontage that would be called out for an estate lot, not necessarily the very narrow one where the driveway will actually go.
But that is no...
Yeah, you're correct. The frontage for the estate lot is 95.28, and you need to dig a little bit deeper into that detail where you see 40.57. That is not the width of the lot there. If you look, there's a long arrow to the left of that that says 50.41.
Correct.
So there's -- if you look at 40.57, and then there's a 9.84 below that.
Yep.
That's got to do with the foolish turtle un-impact area.
Oh, okay. I missed. I apologize.
That's all right.
I missed that 9.8 feet.
Yeah. Now, like I said, this thing's very confusing, and that's why I'm here.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for correcting me.
Certainly.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, because that was my area of concern right there.
So this is then a build of a lot 2 also?
Yes. It's got 161 feet of frontage and 1,000 square feet of...
And all this can't be used because it is turtle.
Regardless if it can't be used, it is a building, a lot, and it's more than 100 feet wide. Well, it's not a separate lot, though, is it?
Lot 2 is.
It's lot 2. They're making a separate lot on this.
You're saying this is a building. I'm saying lot 2 is that whole thing.
No, this is lot 2. No, this is lot 2.
There's already a house on this one right there.
Lot 2 has got those little squiggles.
Yeah.
To incorporate both of those parcels.
No, no, no. These are arrows.
Yeah.
Those are not -- oh, they're not joiners.
No.
They're not joiners. Those are arrows. Those are just identifying verbiage.
User-friendly.
So...
So this lot is owned by...
So those squiggles are joiners, and those squiggles...
No.
No, those are not joiners.
Those are arrows also.
Yep.
Correct. So...
Do you have a question I can help you with?
So lot 3 does not include this parcel. Lot 3 is just down...
Lot 3 is this parcel.
Lot 3 is this right here.
This is lot 4.
The rectangular.
Oh, that's part of lot 4.
Yeah.
Oh, and there's a joiner up here. I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a joiner.
So these are supposed to...
I thought this was 3, and that was 4.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
I think this was impossible to do on a small screen.
So I had to come in. That was just moved down because there wasn't room to squeeze the identification in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Same thing for lot 2. It moved down. Because there wasn't a place to squeeze it in.
Yeah.
I got it. Wow, okay.
Creative drafting.
Yeah.
It's the busiest piece of paper I've seen in a long time.
Me too. And I hate to have to bring this before you, but like I said, I had no choice.
Well, we've got a locus. We've got the identification of the owners in the upper margin on the right-hand side. All the abutters are identified. We seem to have an identification. Yeah, True North is identified, and we've got an identification of lots. The applicants are Henry and Hillary Whitlock. They have signed the application, and...
You've corrected the application to reflect...
I didn't correct anything yet.
That's it.
I was going to take off a state lot, but no, it isn't a state lot.
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right.
It isn't a state lot because the actual access is just that one parcel there. The other access is a loser.
And this has been changed from 43.
This is not sufficient for frontage anyway. This is the loser one.
Yeah, there was a hand change from 43 there. Does anybody else have any questions or anything else to elucidate on this? I'm comfortable. Mr. Isner, is there anything else you want to put forth before we move forward on this?
No, I think everything is there. You understand that we're after three lots and that turtles are going to inhabit the majority of this property, so I don't think there's anything else we can discuss, unless you have questions for me. I'm good.
What kind of turtles?
I have no idea.
We've got eastern box turtles here.
So they're all box turtles?
I've got one.
Probably. All right, no painted turtles, just box turtles.
Let's make a motion to endorse.
All right, I'll make a motion. We endorse the A&R, Henry and Hillary Whitlock, or map 216, lot 3801, and map 205, lot 1.02, which are going to be then reconfigured as lots 2, 3, and 4. Three lots. All second. Motion's made. Seconded by Mr. Hoffler. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Let the record show. 000. No, 500.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, thank you all very much. I appreciate it. What's the process now? Somebody can come pick the plan up tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Night. Okay, now, let's go back to the order. The agenda was presented, and the next one is the subdivision release covenants, subdivision completion for James Haywood. We started to look at this two weeks ago, and Mr. Haywood is done. He's filed his Form F showing -- oops, Form G, showing all of the callbacks for completion are all 100%, and it's signed off by the director of the DPW. And we've also got the certificate of completion from the Conservation Commission, so it's ready to go. So the two things that we have to execute. One, the reform map, which is an application for partial release and exchange of performance guarantees or covenants. We still have $15,125.43 of Mr. Haywood's money, and we're going to sign to release that. And then we've got a certificate of completion and release of municipal interest in subdivision form and security, which upon execution, this will go next to the select board, and then if they consent to it, it'll come back to us again like the other roads that we're prepared to look at next, and...
That already has come to you from the...
Has.
Yeah.
Then we'll be able to take this to town meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna sign the release of the money. This also has to be signed by the clerk. Who's our clerk now?
It's me.
Okay. When this comes by, you also need to attest as the clerk.
Jackie, do you have a rise?
No. I don't. I don't see a notary on this one, but I do see a notary on certificate of completion.
She's right there. She got her notary.
Oh, okay. We'll sign this in the jacket.
I'm signing 4.
I'm signing 3.
Yeah.
I need to vote to release the...
Devoted?
You need to vote on both of them.
Need to vote on both of them. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Form App, Application for Partial Release and Exchange Performance Guarantees or Covenants in Return to Mr. Haywood, the money we had held back on this project. So that's the motion, and it's going to be seconded by -- seconded by Mr. Hoffler. Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Record show 500. And the second one would be a motion to execute Form A, Certificate of Completion and Release of Municipal Interest in Subdivision for Form and Security.
Second.
I have a second on that one. Is the urn. Did I not circulate this? I didn't circulate this to you guys. Let me get the vote done, and then we can get the extra signatures. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Record show 500. Those two signatures, I didn't give them yet. Andrew and Elizabeth. And then we'll have to pass over to Jackie for authorization. Should you bring your stamp? Jackie, should we?
Don't worry, she's watching you.
If you want me to segregate this in any way, then I'll just throw it in the pile. You can catch up. We got the street layouts.
Are the -- I think the milearks are there.
They would have to be signed.
Yeah, they don't need to be, but for some reason, this company always puts a signature block on the ad built. So because the block is there, the registry won't take it without signatures, so we have, I think, three pages here or two anyway. Yeah, this stuff will move.
Okay, there are three signatures. One's on the left, one's on the right, one's on the left, the other one's on the left. Three. Sheffield State?
Yeah, it could have been Sheffield, and it sounds like it's going to be my whole career. You finally gave up on it and took it over.
That was the divorce where we failed to vote. Went out of business, our project. We had to somehow find the money from the town services to try to get the thing completed, all the surveying and the engineering stuff.
Surveying, doing easements, actually all the property owners. By the way, we need to take an easement from you and stuff like that.
And by then, the road had started to settle.
Oh, yeah.
So people were complaining about the roads. Okay, moving right along. We've got the street layouts for the Willow Lane-Jason's Way subdivision and the Hickory Hills subdivision. And parts of this broken Hickory Hills, Woods Edge-Jason's Way. Why are we separating out Magnolia Lane, Sycamore Circle, Dogwood Drive? They're separate streets. They're all part of Hickory Hills, right?
They're all part of Hickory Hill, yeah.
But we need a separate...
Individual streets.
They're individual streets. So we've got to do each and every one as an individual street?
No, you could say that like you've done before.
Could put the whole thing all at once?
Yeah. The subdivision is complete. Please lay the roads out.
All right. So the form of our vote for right now is just a recommendation to town meeting that it be accepted?
Recommendation to the select board that they lay them out to go to town meeting.
Okay. So I'll make a recommendation to the select board that they lay out for town meeting Willow Lane, Jason's Way, Sycamore Circle, Magnolia Lane, Dogwood Drive, and Hickory Hill, being parts of the Willow Lane-Jason's Way subdivision and the Hickory Hills subdivision. And do that all as one motion, do you think?
Yeah, that works.
All right, motion's made. Seconded by Elizabeth. And seconded for discussion on motion. Hearing none, I'll move to a vote all in favor.
All right.
Aye.
So we've got all of this stuff, and there's nothing for us to sign. Just a recommendation back to the select board, and they're going to present it at town meeting, which is what we've done in the past, not us. They're going to do it.
So, yeah, they're the road commissioners.
Got the community facilities plan, Belcher Town Community Plan. It's part of the master plan. This is the report that we had seen here two meetings ago and had recommended. No, four meetings, three meetings ago.
February 3 or 4, are you on?
And it had gone to the select board. They accepted it, and it's back to us again.
Formally adopted as part of the master.
So we're going to be voting to adopt it as part of the master plan, and that's...
It's more of what we didn't ask, and then we'll come back.
You won't decide what to do with it.
All right, so we are looking at a right of first refusal on Cold Spring Street. Map says map 259, block 1.02, to remove one acre. And I wonder if, so we would not be doing anything I would've been recommending to the Select Board, or where we have it. But Doug, maybe you can walk us through this, because I have a lot of questions.
It's a confusing application. Memo from the town manager indicates they requested to remove one acre. The explanation we got from the assessor's office makes it seem like they would be taking out 10 acres. At this time, but yet, at this time, they're requesting that one acre be removed and released from the state lot one, so we can build a barn. I think that's the complete statement that was necessary. So I was told that they didn't have a specific location yet for their barn, but somewhere on that property, they would have one acre taken out of chapter 61, or 61B, I guess it is, for a barn, and when they decide, they would tell the assessors where that one acre is. And so, I think that's what we're looking at. So one sort of amorphous, undescribed acre of ten acre parcel.
Except that, what they say is that it.
We intend to return the entire parcel to full value.
Yeah.
So we're actually dealing with two parcels. That's town manager's note, referred to parcel 259-1.02. On our GIS map, that is the 1.3 acre chunk, and lot one is the 8.6133, whatever, bigger lot. Now, the GIS acknowledges the A and R, because it's now broken into those two lots, but it still has it as the OC McConnell property that has not registered the deed transfer, which happened on January 25th, I think. So are they mistaken about the lot numbers?
So did you, can you see what you said before about the lot? So this is, the application is saying that lot one, estate lot, is the same as 259-1.02.
Which is not the case.
Which is not true.
That's not.
Yeah, exactly. The house is the 1.02.
So I don't, how can we?
But they're not.
Make a recommendation on something that is.
But they're asking to remove the one acre lot from not the house lot.
That's what the narration suggests, that that is someplace, a one acre chunk someplace within the 8.6.
Correct. That's the way I read it.
So not on lot one, on lot two. Somewhere on lot two.
No, it's not 1 and 2. It's one is the big lot, and 1.02 is the small.
A lot.
Unless someplace in the deed transfer, those numbers changed, and it's just not reflected yet on the GIS. I wouldn't think of it either. So I really think we need clarity in order to be able to, I mean, habitually, we don't recommend acquiring one acre lots.
I read it like they're asking us to call it 1.02, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, because, because I'm.
Like, they're, they're saying that's what it's gonna be called when it's done.
Because the affidavit calls them 1 and 2.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
It's just, it's just very inconsistent.
So I'm, I'm reading it differently. I'm reading it regardless of what they're gonna do with the land, how they're gonna treat it, they want to remove all eight acres from tax classification.
But.
If they remove all eight acres from tax classification, then all eight acres are then subject to the right of first refusal by the town. Our recommendation needs to reflect whether or not the town invokes that right of first refusal, to me, on the entire eight acres. What they do with it afterwards is irrelevant. They are removing it, they formally requested to remove it all from tax classification.
Yeah. But they're asking us to exercise, to make the recommendation on one acre.
I don't see where they're requesting anything with the, with the whole eight acres. They, they mention it, it's mentioned in this email, but if you ignore the email, and look at the actual notice of intent and the affidavit, it, it doesn't mention removing the whole eight acres at all.
It says, it is our intention to remove all acres from chapter.
And which document it said?
That's in the.
Oh, oh, there it is.
That's why this is so murky.
Yeah, the next sentence is contradictory.
Right.
Wait, what do you mean the next sentence is contradictory?
This is.
Our intention to remove all.
Eight acres.
Yeah, then the next sentence says we will be requesting the release of one acre.
One acre.
From lean.
Yeah.
From lean, we're requesting one acre from lean.
Right.
Well, lean suggests check, I mean, if you're, they're recorded as leans.
Yeah.
So.
So I think they're separating their intention from their request. Their intention is something that they intend to do, they're not doing it yet. They are requesting the release of one acre.
From lean.
From the lean.
For the purposes of building a barn, so they are doing something.
All other acres, so the remaining 7. whatever, will be maintained and used in a manner that is accepted for 61B, 61B for five years.
During those five years, so that 7. whatever acres is not in chapter status.
But they're only requesting one of those acres to be pulled from it.
That's the confusing part.
Yeah.
So I'm saying.
I, I'm not willing to make a recommendation.
They should word it properly.
Yeah, they need to be clear that we're not guessing at what they're meaning.
And if they're, if they're truly taking eight acres.
You got 150 days or something, yeah.
Is this something that, does it fall upon you to explain to them why we're so confused?
No, I will send a memo to the Select Board with a copy to the conservation and assessors, explaining, you don't know how much they're, you know, they need to have a better application. Because even with Andrea's explanation in her email, we're not getting it.
And, and the parcel numbers are, don't reflect what they're talking about, so.
Right.
So do we have to make a vote on, on saying that?
No, you don't have to vote. I was passed that information on.
Are you all in agreement that it's a little too?
Yep.
Confusing to?
Yes.
Okay. Charlotte goes ahead.
You're, you're clear on our confusion.
Yeah. Releasing town, are you releasing one? What are you doing?
Well, and I would, I would face the question differently depending on the size of the issue.
Okay, next one is an A and R for Cold Spring Street and Saban Street. It's entirely clear what's happening here, so I don't know if I have a conflict or not.
I think this one is only, only one of the.
It says that on map 260, lots 34 and 36, that they're redesignating as estate lot two and remaining land, so they're knocking an estate lot off of 34 and 36.
Seems to me that this is really the only new thing, which, this line, this looks exactly the same. I don't understand why they're talking about this.
Remaining, remaining land 2A, that's remaining, and that's remaining.
But they were making.
This is, this is 1A, and that's 2A.
Right. But they say.
They're, they're creating this one.
Right, I'm not in a butter to this, okay?
They're, they're creating this one, so that line is new, this is the remaining land, this is the remaining land.
So what they, they say is they're.
One parcel, new line, remaining.
Remaining from.
So this is not changing at all.
How is 36 changing now?
This is not changing at all.
So why is it part of this at all?
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't need to be, but I think they were just running, going off the original plan for the whole works. The whole big parcel that they're hacking up.
This is what we did in November, and that has not changed at all. The only thing that's changed is we got a line coming down here, so there was already frontage there.
Yeah, he's right. So really, the plan could, could just be this.
It could not mention, it could not mention 1A, remaining land 1A.
No, no, they're, they're combining lot 1A and, remaining 1A and remaining 2A. It says number of proposed lots, one lot, remaining 1A and remaining 2A, lot two is the other one. Lot two is a remainder, this is the remainder, these are now one lot.
One lot, one lot.
One lot.
Remaining land A and remaining two.
They're, they're.
They're drawing this line, this is now one lot, this is a separate lot.
How can there be two lots that don't occupy each other?
Yeah, there's still two lots, but under one ownership.
No, this is one lot.
That doesn't make, yeah, I don't.
I think it's, I was, I think it's probably a mistake.
Yeah, it's probably a mistake.
They want three lots.
Because nothing.
Sherman and Frederick, Sherman and Frederick's been working with this right from the very beginning. How could they be so confused?
There's been a lot of.
I imagine they're gonna cut this into probably three lines.
Well, the other thing is, the area of the existing lots is 13 acres, and if you add estate lot, or remaining 2A, plus remaining 1A, you get 13 acres.
Right. I would guess that they're, they're just considering all the remaining land from the original parcel.
Is this way of making?
I think he's trying to put them all back to this. No? No, because he said, look, the number of proposed lots, one lot.
One lot?
Yeah, they're creating that one. These are not being created.
Oh, they are continuing to remain.
They remain, yeah.
That's two lots.
Whoa.
One.
There's one.
Two.
One and two are.
This is remaining land, this is the only one that's lot that's being created.
Oh, I see. This is, this word.
Leftover.
It's the leftover, but they could just easily say this one was the leftover.
Yeah, so this has apparently just about enough area in frontage for an estate lot and a standard lot, and this, you could probably, you know, you might get three lots out of it.
They remain, that 1A, you could get three lots out of, so they're just, they're just reminding us that it's there, that they can divide it.
Well, they're going to divide it when the building gets a.
This was all 34, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is 36.
It's.
So they're subdividing 34.
That's it, yeah.
Nothing to do with 36.
Right, 1A is irrelevant.
That's.
But listed for fun.
But it says two lots. It's, they're, they're starting with one lot and making it two, and they're telling us here they're starting with two lots and making it one.
Or they're saying that they're starting with two lots and making it three.
It's still not right.
It's still not right. So.
What they, what they really mean is that there's two existing lots, they're making three. They have two existing lots, remainder 1A, remainder 2A, they're carving off lot two out of this, 1A remains, 2A remains, lot, estate lot two here.
Yeah.
So this number is three, proposed lots, three.
Do we have to, do we have to take action on this one? I, I think it's, it is confusing on its face to the point that we're sitting here coming up with multiple different scenarios of what it means.
Application is what confuses it.
Well, the application is what's supposed to explain what's going on.
Yes.
And if it doesn't, if it doesn't lend itself to a straightforward, you know, story, how are we supposed to make a determination?
No, you have, what is it, 21 days, so when was it submitted?
18.
So, I'm gonna keep counting. Well, I imagine they're gonna cut this into probably three lines.
Well, the other thing is, the area of the existing lots is thirteen acres. And if you add estate lot off remaining two A, plus remaining one A, you get thirteen acres.
Right. I would guess that they're, they're just considering an all remaining land from the original parcel.
Is this a way of making?
I think he's trying to put them all back to this. No?
No.
Cause he said, look, the number of proposed lots, one lot.
One lot?
Yeah, they're creating that one, these are not being created, they're.
Oh, they are continuing to remain.
They remain, yeah.
That's two lots.
Whoa.
One.
There's one.
Two.
One and two are.
This is remaining land, this is the only one that's lot that's being created.
Oh, I see.
This is remaining.
This is, this word.
Leftover.
It's the leftover, but they could just easily say this one was the leftover.
So this has apparently just about enough area in frontage for an estate lot and a standard lot. And this, you could probably, you know, you might get three lots out of it.
They remain, that one A, you could get three lots out of, so they're just give, they're, they're just reminding us that it's there, that they can divide it.
Well, they're going to divide it when the building gets a.
This was all thirty-four, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is thirty-six.
It's.
So they're subdividing thirty-four.
That's it, yeah.
It's got nothing to do with thirty-six.
Right, one A is irrelevant.
That's.
But listed for fun.
But it says two lots. It's, they're, they're, they're starting with one lot and making it two, and they're telling us here they're starting with two lots and making it one.
Or they're saying that they're starting with two lots and making it three.
It's still not right.
It's still not right. So.
What they.
Does it make it?
What they really mean is that there's two existing lots, they're making three. They, they have two existing lots, what, remainder one A, remainder two A, they're carving off lot two out of this. One A remains, two A remains, lot, estate lot two here.
Yeah.
So this number is three, proposed lots three.
Um, do we have to, do we have to take action on this one? I, I think it's, it is confusing on its face to the point that, uh, we're sitting here coming up with multiple different scenarios of what it means.
Application is what confuses it.
Well, the application is what's supposed to explain what's going on. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't lend itself to a straightforward, you know, uh, story, how are we supposed to make a determination?
No, you, you have, uh, what is it, twenty-one days, so when was it submitted?
Uh, eighteen.
So, I'll keep counting.
So we need to take action at twenty-one days?
Yeah.
When's your next meeting? Twenty-one days for the eleven.
Well, we could take action to deny it and say that it does not make sense.
Yeah.
Oh, cause actually.
So that, we have twenty-one days to make a decision, we could deny it. So we could continue it for one more meeting and ask them to clarify exactly what they're doing here, because the application does not lend itself to, to explain what's happening on the A and R.
You could still be alive, still be good on the April.
Right, right.
So.
If they fix it so that they can make a vote then.
If they fix this, we make a vote, if not, if they, if they don't want to fix it, then.
Then we deny it on the eighth.
Yeah.
Then tell them that, uh, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Their application does not, um, uh, keep, is not in keeping with what they've actually proposed on the plan.
Yeah, I'm having clarify the application and invite them to show up on our TV screen here.
This is gonna be a really tough estate lot, too. The one next to it, with Alan Clark.
That's the one they're working right now.
At least is, that one went up sort of the side of the hill, if you've been down on Saban lately. Uh, and even that one's a little bit of a tough path, it's really elevated. I don't know how they're gonna get up that hill right there. It's like straight up.
They may just purchase an easement.
They could combine them and come up on driveway, and that would make a lot more sense, yeah.
So this one, they could only, they could do maybe one estate and one standard lot, it's only total of four point three.
Correct. Look, um, I, I don't think we should be taking action on this one.
No.
It, the application, it just does not make sense. So we're gonna send it back without action.
And, and maybe at some point, formation have more space to this complicated thing.
Well, this is Sherman and Frederick, how many years have they been in business? And how many years have they been doing business in our town? And they can be a lot more straightforward than that, and if they have something that's very complicated, they can give us the courtesy of having somebody come in here and explain it.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
We shouldn't have to guess what's going on.
I'll say.
Yeah, well, yeah, and how many times have we looked at this property already? It should be straightforward by now. Oh, the next item, discussion zone change for that parcel off of parcel D of the, the state school off of, uh, twenty-one. You wanna tell us what's going on since this is coming on really quick? I mean, it, it hasn't been discussed before. All of a sudden, it's, it's here and they wanna get it on, uh, the, and, uh, on the agenda for the town meeting, what they're up to.
So parcel B, the big red spot in the middle, uh, was one of the properties of the former state school. And EDIC has a grant right now to design a road in there for, um, to turn it into commercial property. It's for contractor type, types who can't find over there to go. Developing works for it and, um, just enough area to make things work there. But on the, you look towards the southwest, there's a steep slope that goes up to those neighboring properties. And then, of course, on the northeast, it's a broken, wetland. So, um, the other part of property then is land lot, the town was a tax taking a number of years ago. And, um, it's mostly wet, but this little peninsula that sticks up next to, uh, the EDIC's property is, is buildable. It's level and they could probably get a couple of business parcels in at least one, uh, give them more flexibility. The select board agreed, okay, we can convey it for the EDIC for this. Um, and in the meeting last week, it was noted that, uh, yeah, there needs to be a zone change too then. It's gonna become part of that parcel and used for business, so, um, that's, uh, that's where we are with that.
Cause it's Ag A.
Right now it's Ag A and wants to become a B two, actually, they want it to become B two, I think it would rather stay as a four.
Is it wooded? Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is, they've logged their parcel extensively, but the town, I think the town parcel was logged along.
Can they build the road without the zoning change?
They want to know how long that road is going to be and if it is going to be, if it's, if it's needed to reach that piece of property.
The town, the town conveys that portion of property over to EDIC.
Yeah.
EDIC then owns a piece of property that's mostly, uh, B two, but some Ag A.
Right.
EDIC then puts in a road that goes all the way through the B two and extends into the Ag A portion, is that possible? Sure.
Yeah.
And would the grant give them the money for that? I don't know, I, I, what I'm after is what's the urgency?
I think they wanna get this sorted out and done so they can move ahead, otherwise they come back next year, which is not a big deal because the road's not gonna be built by them anyway. I think they wanted to have it sort of all in one place.
The, the grant to design the road, is there a time limit on that? Is that part of the equation here? They've gotta use it or they'll lose it?
Yeah, yeah. They're fine by working on that. That's a remembered option.
So the road design contract is already out there? Oh, all right. That's not part of the rush.
A vaguer question. Um, does this land duplicate land that's already on a road in, on the old state school property then?
No, because the types of businesses they're thinking of in here are not really allowed on the main campus.
This, this is the contractor yard type of.
Right.
What they're envisioning here.
Yeah, people with big trucks and need parking areas and, um, storage, things like that.
There's no intent to put, um, multifamily housing in there.
Not, no.
Cause I, I remember that was part of the conversation when we were talking about Barissa, there was voices talking about developing parcel D instead of Barissa.
Well, they, they, yeah, they went, no, not for housing, no.
They have to change the zoning again anyway, wouldn't they?
Yeah, cause this is the only one needing more for.
So the EDIC has already logged the chunk that they already own, the forest there is gone.
Yeah, you can drive it there, if it's not too many.
Well, we've been making all kinds of noise about expanding the business footprint town.
Yeah.
This is a logical way of doing it, I mean, it's, it's adjacent to a property that's already controlled by the town that, um, it wouldn't really be impacting any residential areas, you know, neighborhoods or anybody, I, I, I don't see any detriment to putting it in there.
Well, they're gonna be annoyed anyway.
For who?
Oh, and any of the neighbors, whether this.
Oh, you mean ledgers to estates.
Yeah.
Is that really gonna get near enough to them?
Probably not going to be, I mean, in the winter, some of these people might be able to see things, but it's down the hill, through the woods.
True.
Ledgers, ledgers to estates. Ledgers.
The, and the idea behind a contractor yard is that it's not for noise and fabrication and, and, uh, you know.
Right.
Construction type of work going on there, it's for storage of the, the snow plows or the, or the lawn mowers.
So it would be restricted to, to contractor yard type stuff, I mean.
Um, that's where they're gonna market.
That's their, that's their intention, that's who they're marketing it to, so people like, uh, tree companies, landscapers, plumbers, whatever. I can have my workshop here, so yeah, I mean, those guys usually get to work pretty early, so there could be some six and seven o'clock noise. But, you know, that's been the plan for these properties for decades now.
It, it wouldn't be six o'clock, it'd be seven, right? Don't we have a noise?
Oh, yeah, for making, like, you know, running your chainsaw and stuff, but for just driving up to your place and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That kind of noise.
Well, we need to, we need, uh, as, as much as I don't like being pushy, we do need to do whatever we can to, um, support non-residential income, so small businesses or, you know, any, any kind of business that we can get into this town.
What we're being asked to do is just make a recommendation to town meeting, or we're not even being asked that?
No, you're gonna, you're gonna have a public hearing on April twenty-seventh.
So we're just being asked to have a public hearing?
Yep.
To air the matter?
Yep.
But the, the, the people actually presenting this at town meeting is gonna be the EDIC?
That's their show.
And will maybe the spokespeople, if we have a public hearing? They were pretty quiet at our.
They should, they're the ones behind this.
So we're not being asked to make a recommendation on it, on what we're doing?
You will, after, after the public hearing, you make your recommendation to town meeting, yes, I know.
Oh.
So why wouldn't we give them a public hearing and all, let them?
Keep talking about it.
Have their day.
I feel better saying, sure, have a public hearing, when I might feel less good about.
Yeah.
Gives all those voters their chance to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Air it out, and, um, we wanna make sure that the EDIC knows that they're the ones that are gonna be making this presentation, not us.
Yeah.
And we're just bringing it before the public, we're not here as advocates necessarily.
Exactly, you're processing, you're doing the process right now, this isn't something you generated or you don't know if you're supported yet or not, so.
So this is similar to the rezoning request for Daniel Shays Highway a number of years back, where.
Oh, for the parking lot or something?
Where Kirk Seagull's made a request to have a, but it was his, his game.
Yeah.
His presentation.
Yeah.
Who's gonna pay for, uh, advertising? EDIC or us?
Squeeze some money out of them.
Could you ask them?
We'll send them a bill.
Was it?
Yeah, well.
It was their idea.
I, I wouldn't ask, I'd tell.
Yeah.
It's, it's, okay, yeah, tell them it's their nickel for advertising for the public hearing.
I have a list of them now.
When they sell the lots, they'll have lots of money.
Yeah. Well, they have a grant to design the road, but nobody's talked about the money to build the road yet either.
Yeah, there'd be more grants or.
No road, they can't do anything with this property, so.
Yeah.
How are they gonna come up with the money for the road? I mean, it's the next shoe to fall, but that's their problem also.
That's their problem, not what we're looking at right now.
But it, you know, that, that's been the problem with, uh, the state school in the past, is without a budget, they've been dependent on the developers to try to bring the infrastructure to the project. And if that's the same situation here, they, they might have some difficulty.
Grants and bonds are the other.
The small contractors are not gonna build the road.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless they have some kind of plan for the rest of the property, right?
Right, yeah.
That's, that's more massive. Or it's more substantial.
Some individuals showed up and said, I'll, I'll do the road here, and then I'll, I'll, I'll just take the whole thing from you and build it and sell lots or whatever, that's fine.
Well, either that, or somebody's gonna have to bring building the road to town meeting and have the town float a bond to, to build the road.
Right, yeah, that's how that was done.
Okay. I, I would say that's all the salesmanship that's gonna come before the EDIC. We, we can support it, but, um, it's gonna be their project. Uh, I, I put Pepper Rich on the discussion again, because the last correspondence that I was able to find on Pepper Rich went back to December. And we had queried them in November of what was, what was going on, cause we hadn't heard from them for a while, and they said, oh yeah, we're all set and, um, we're actively exploring options to take care of cracks in the pavements. I want to update you on subdivision completion, we're collaborating with Bob Goyette to secure contractors to be handling repointing structures within the roadway, or optimists that this work could be completed before the end of the construction season. Well, obviously, that got missed, and what I did was I asked the, um, town planner to go to DPW and ask for an expense statement of what the town has been paying to, to, to support the subdivision during this extended development period. Did a copy get, yeah, you handed out a copy to everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, stone ice eighty-six hundred, basin clearing twenty-two hundred, so for ten, almost eleven thousand dollars, we've paid a town money to maintain the subdivision while this particular developer continues to stretch things out and has not been in communication with us. Now, their subdivision had expired again. And it got picked up and carried forward by the state under that extension of all permits. And that's good for two years, and they did that, what, last August or September? So it's good all the way through this year and probably into next year, so the subdivision is technically still on the books. But here we are, having the town pay for it, we're in a, a period of sort of tight money, and we've got everybody in, in town, um, going through high levels of distress over money. And here the town is paying to maintain this subdivision, and I find that distressful, what can we do? Is there anything we can do to, to either kill the subdivision? Like we tried to before, because they weren't paying any attention to their, their deadlines? Or to motivate them in some way to?
Prefer to do the same thing, that's.
Do we have any grounds, though? Last time, our grounds was that it was an expired subdivision.
Well, you could use the argument that you're costing us money to maintain your, your property, and we don't maintain other people's private property.
Is that an argument that the rest of the board would support us of making at this time? It's something that we, we started to do with other subdivisions in town, but we never really enforced that. We never went to anybody and said, hey, we're gonna try to discontinue your subdivision because you're not, you're not progressing. You might have a valid permit, but you're not progressing and it's costing us money to maintain. So this would be a change in policy for us, and we'd have to keep doing it to others if we started doing it with this one.
But hasn't the public safety issue always been the reason why we keep allowing it and that's, that's.
It is. Why do we not bill them upon, like, as we go? Like, hey, if, for public safety reasons, we had to do this, here's, here's the, here's the invoice.
And then if it doesn't get paid, you then have a lien.
That would be the Department of Public Works, though, doing that.
Yeah.
Not us.
Right.
So. Should we be, you know, would that be our action item, then recommending to the Department of Public Works that they look into billing? Or adding it to the tax load of this property so the town has some way of recovering it?
Well, on a, on a, on a bigger scale, you'd have to go to the DPW and say, effective, whatever date, no subdivision gets. whatever date, no subdivision gets plowed without being built.
My understanding, because I remember Steve Williams having a conversation, I thought it was in with, with us, maybe it was with the select board, saying that that, that they were not going to, to do maintenance on private subdivisions anymore, that that had stopped.
Not maintenance, but plowing.
Right.
As soon as there's a house on, on the street, they plow it.
Because the biotrap couldn't get through or the adials couldn't get through and.
But there's no reason they can't start billing them.
Right.
Every subdivision, not just this one.
Yeah.
But all subdivisions.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, after town meeting, will Pepper Ridge be, well, we've still got the one down on 181.
Wouldn't.
That's, I've lost, that's not.
No, that's done.
Is that, yeah, we're going to make that, oh, that's, so maybe there isn't anybody else.
No, there's the other one down off of, of Bardwell.
Bardwell, yeah.
That's what?
Woodland.
Woodland, yeah.
I, I don't think, well, you asked her about that one too, didn't you, about Wood?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the second paragraph.
Oh, I didn't read the other one.
It says they haven't plowed.
They said they've been negligible.
But with regard to Snow and Ice, with the exception of a few times this past winter, we have not treated or plowed this roadway. I'm not sure what we would do next year for Snow and Ice.
Well, I know i- if there's a, a matter of public exigency, the town can do something on somebody's private property and bill them through the, the tax structure. Like if you have, but it's usually your, your house burns and it's uninhabitable and then there's a derelict there and you're not doing anything about it and it's a, it's a public hazard, the town could come in and raise it and then bill those expenses to your tax, tax model. I don't know what really makes this different. I mean, if you have to plow the road as a matter of public safety, it's a public exigency as far as I can see, why wouldn't they apply the same theory anyway? Say, we, we're not expending public monies to take care of your private property. You're going to have to pay us and if you don't, we're going to bill you through the tax system. If you don't pay your taxes, then we're going to foreclose the taxes and take your property like they do anybody else.
Yeah, this, this woodland thing may just be because we didn't have much snow this year.
They could have looked on.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does, says, I'm not sure what we do snow.
The development in Woodland too, you know, it's another one of those lollipops. All the houses that have been built are up close to Bardwell. They haven't been building back around the cul-de-sac yet. So getting into those houses near Bardwell, I think has been pretty easy.
From my perspective, I, I, I think it's the correct direction to go that with any and all subdivisions, it's private property, it's private roads, the town should not be maintaining them, plowing them for free. If the contractor, the owner, the developer wants to plow it themselves and save the money, fine, that's their option. But if they don't do it for the safety of the people, the town will and, and bill. And to me, that would be a direction to go with Pepper Ridge. I'm not sure I want to foreclose or cancel the, the, the permit, the subdivision. Just based on this, but I, but I, but certainly we need to start developing some kind of leverage.
Yeah.
So that would be my recommendation.
All right. So can we write a letter from the planning board to, I think we should start with the town manager?
Yeah.
And say that, and we, we can use these, these two examples, that we've got subdivisions that we, we cannot enforce any activity on because of the action taken by the state to extend all permits and it's costing the town money to take care of these. We, the developer has not been really working with us and cooperating to, to finish the development. It's not been in communication with us, letting us know what's going on and that we think that the town should take some kind of action to, to collect these monies.
The, the only thing to that, Dan, that I would add is that even if a developer is the best developer in the world and is working hard and, and doing everything we ask, when it comes time to plowing, he's got to, he's got to pick up the cost of the plowing. So it's not a case of because they're bad.
It's not punishment.
It's not punishment.
It's just the way it is.
It's not personal, it's just business.
Well, it's, it's basically state law too. State laws, they're not supposed to be using public services to, to take care of private And I know that that had been an issue on some of the private roads around the lakes.
Yeah, it was.
They had put their foot down and said, we're not going to.
Right.
It's, you know, because there was improvements needed on some of those private roads.
That's right.
People were saying, well, we can't get in and out of the roads because a lot of them were, were, you know, semi-improved and the town, I think, did do some work over, you know, at certain periods of time, but they probably put the, they finally put their foot down in there too and said, no, we're not going to. So what's good for them is good for everybody.
Exactly. Otherwise, we'll end up plowing all the apartments and everything else.
All right. Could you prepare a letter for us then, please?
Yeah.
And we'll send it on behalf of the planning board instead of just the town planner. All right. I've got the minutes from our meeting, March 11th. This has been circulated. Everybody's had a chance to look at them. Anybody have any additions, deletions, changes that they want to make in the minutes that they can prepare? Hearing none, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of March 11th, 2025 as prepared. Second, seconded by Elizabeth. She made a second for a discussion on the motion. Hearing none, move to a vote in favor. Oh, could, could you also send a note to Pepper Ridge and just tell them we would like to know what, what's going on out there? Thank you very much, keeping us in the loop. Do the town planner report. Mr. Doug, it's all yours.
Subdivision regulations. I'm on. I contacted them last week. I'll put something to you next week. And please, I have a couple of issues. And I think we've got time to stop. Grant stuff, the expression of interest period ended today. And you should be, a lot of work just to, just for your special interest, it would be greatly simplified. So now you just kind of say, this is what I want to do and here's my general enough that I'm, you'll see, before I came down there and I, for, I already got the responses. Okay, this could be for this grant, this could be for that grant. Okay, great. So anyway, those applications will due June 4th. So, yeah, there's the roof for the tadpole we were applying for and then extending it down to parcel to, to, to the, to the, to the, to the, even if you don't do an expression that was, you can still apply the, 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 the MBP process. There were two public sessions last week. There was one on Saturday and told was very successful in terms of getting people to show up and provide information. And I went to the line Wednesday and it was mostly people from buying valley, but everyone's very engaged. And I was thinking, I was, people were thinking, yeah, what happens if, you know, we have a horrible storm and we're stranded here and no power and what do we do? So, I'm pretty sure you could, you could that stuff from them. And, yeah, there was only one crank in the crowd. Just kidding. Mike was there and he participated very well. He, he represented you all in a good way. Solar, our solar company, they started clearing this, I guess you know, and finally got the agreement done with the, with the guarantees. So they agreed, put up the cash. Our lawyer sent, sent me the form, I forwarded to them. They signed it and returned it. Steve O'Ime signed it for us and so all they need to do now is send our treasurer the money, which could happen at any time.
Did they agree to the escrow agreement also?
Yeah, that's it. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
All right. I thought you were talking about the bond.
No bonds, not even bonds. It's putting the money, money in the escrow, the whole works, including the 10% contingency. And the housing choice process is up, so I got to dig into that and collect also good little facts here and there and assemble this and fiddle with that and PDF that and go to this website and get something else and just a lot of that stuff. Let's see, what else is going on today? The UMass Community Vations Department or whatever they're called, several of us met with them and the executive director of the Amherst Area Chamber of Farmers, who is a Belger town resident and engaged in things locally. We gave them a tour of the tadpole building and walked around that area and they were amazed by the possibilities, you know, because like most people, they just don't know all this stuff is here. And so that's the big part of it that we're trying to do is like, you know, let's, let people know things are here, things can happen.
What kind of things were they thinking of?
They, they were sort of imagining, hmm, some, you know, and then Steve mentions indoor sports or, you know, complex of some sort. And some people are, well, maybe, you know, a, a boutique grocery or something, you know, and, you know, what could be done, but they're thinking more just sort of generally like, oh gee, now that stuff, we know all this.
That's here. What's the makeup across?
Yeah.
Meaning that just having a building of that size with a roof and, and viable for, for.
Not just for tadpole, but for Belger town in general. You know, we, we focused them on that area. But, you know, I think certainly the area we want to develop is carriage road.
Oh, so they were looking at the whole complex?
Yeah, yeah, we walked around, walked around right here. And that's Christopher Higgs, that's the day school and this building is that one over there and that kind of stuff. So, but I think that was, that was useful. But what you're finding in branding projects, open house here tomorrow, 6:00 to 7:30 if anyone wants to drop in and see what's going on and offer perspective and opinion. That's happening. And just heard just before the meeting that hybrid meetings will be Uwebel through June 2027. So the oath, Senate and House passed it, the governor still has the sign, but we expect she will because it was one of the items included in her, one of the.
June 27th, did you say?
June 2027, yeah. So tomorrow years. I don't know why it's not permanent, but I don't, I don't mind making it permanent. So we'll just keep doing it this way. And that's all I know.
Awesome. Thank you. Leonard, do you have anything you want to share with the board?
No.
Yeah, anything you'd like to share?
Uh, yeah.
Elizabeth, there's no one. I'm no, jeez, we're going to finish this up then. Okay. If nobody else has anything else to bring for the board, make motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, no discussion. I'll take it to a vote in favor.
Aye.
Dr. Chau 500. Jack, well, you can turn off the hour.